Okay, well, the number has stabilized, which is usually that sign on a Zoom that everybody has joined that was in the waiting rooms. Welcome to our Ward Six and Seven Virtual Town Hall for the city of Barry. I am, of course, joined tonight by Ward Six Councillor Natalie Harrison, Ward Seven Councillor Gary Harvey. I'm Mayor Lehman, and we're also joined by Inspector Kevin McLean and Staff Sergeant Val Gates of the Barry Police Service, who are here tonight to answer any questions about safety concerns and traffic and those sorts of things that are in their area of responsibility as well. Our plan tonight is to respect your time. We do hope to wrap up right around eight o'clock, but of course, tonight is just one of many ways that you can communicate with myself and your ward councillors, email, online and phone and otherwise. And certainly, if there are things that we can't answer for you tonight, or issues that require some more follow-up, we will, if we can get your contact details, and Lauren Wild from my office, who has organized tonight's town hall, and from whom you received the reminder email. So that's her direct email, and you can send any questions or requests for follow-up, as well as your contact details to her if you want us to follow up with an item on the agenda tonight. So I'm just going to say a very few words and then hand it over to Nat and Gary to say a few words of introduction, then we'll turn it over to questions from all of you. After all, that's the point of our town hall tonight. We obviously are in a very odd time in the history of everything. We are in day 220 some odd of a municipal state of emergency, and many, many things are different, but I can assure you that your city council and the city government have been working, in many cases, around the clock to continue to deliver the services that we all need and rely on in our daily life, but also to move the city forward. And in many ways, that has required us to change the way we do business and deliver services, and it's required businesses and residents to change the way they do things. And we have been, if I can say it, very successful, I believe, as a community in fighting the spread of COVID. We were very successful in the first wave. We're doing well with the second wave, although the numbers are higher than already are higher than in the first wave. So we're going to need to keep up the kinds of changes to the way we live and the way we work and the way we play for the foreseeable future to stop the spread. But that being said, there has been a remarkable degree of collaboration among levels of government to fight COVID. Our emergency services, obviously, the Barry Police here tonight, Barry Fire, Sycamore County EMS, have had to change the way they do things and support people in crisis and in need. But all the other services that we continue to deliver as a community, we are moving forward with. And of course, that includes taking and working on planning applications and developments that are brought to the city. Councils had a very full agenda. Next Monday, we will have a general committee, the next phase of our economic recovery plan. And the premier was in town today, as some of you may have seen, at our leading industrial employer, Napoleon, to announce a buy local campaign, a made in Ontario guide to buying Ontario-made products. And that was certainly a great profile for a company here in Barry, whose workforce is now actually bigger than before COVID. And there are so many of these stories of companies that have adapted and continued to work well. But there are many that are struggling, and many people in our community who are struggling. We are at a time of elevated unemployment, and we have sectors like the restaurant sector and anything tourism-related that are struggling. So the city will continue to try and support them. We don't have the deep pockets of the federal and provincial government. We'll leave rent subsidies and wage subsidies to them. But we continue to try and work with the local business community to keep our town prosperous and safe. And the more we can do what we have been doing to distance and fight the spread, the more the chance that we will be able to stay in Phase Three and not require further restrictions on the life we all enjoy here in Barry. So those are some very general comments. I have not in any way touched on the issues that are probably on your mind in your ward, in your neighborhood, or on your street. I know Nat and Gary are always on top of those, and we look forward to hearing from you about issues, small and large, tonight. So with that, I'll hand it over to Ward Six Councillor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman, and welcome to everyone who is watching. This is very different, very odd that I can't see any of you. I don't know. I probably know some of you personally, and I just, hopefully, when I hear your questions and see your names, then I'll be able to know, recognize you. But I'm really looking forward to answering any of your questions in Ward Six. I would say, one of the biggest questions, concerns I always get is speed and noise related to cars, you know, and mufflers as well, on Ferndale and Arda Road. So I, that's something that's like always on the top of my list. I speak with our Director of Dave Ferrari on a regular basis, and Officer Alport at Barry Police Services, to try to really make sure that we get as much speed control and noise control as possible. One thing that I wanted to share with you is, we have, every councillor each year has a certain amount of money allotted to improve their community or their ward. So something that I'm investigating right now with that department is potentially offering Ward Six to be a kind of a trial or a pilot area for any new updated speed control, maybe that's permanent speed pads, speed bumps that are able to stay through our winters with our snowplows, etc., because that's really a hard thing that I think we deal with in Barry. We get snow, and that is something that really affects what kind of permanent speed control measures we can use. So that's in preliminary talks right now, but that is already money that is set aside. So if that's something that we can do, wouldn't even need to go to city council to get that approved. We could just do that. So I will keep you posted. And so vote Natalie.ca is my website, and I try to update as much as possible with things that are related to our ward and the city, of course. And social media as well, you can find me there. Mostly on Facebook is a good place for my city page. And yeah, I just, I just want you to know, like, I really, Arda Road, I lived on Arda Road, and I feel your frustration so much about the speed and the noise that seems to be getting worse, to be honest. And I'm really in conversation all the time to really try to figure out how we can manage this. I know I've also spoken with our clerk, our city clerk, even day one, probably, I think I did a wish list, and that was for photo radar and photo, any kind of Mmore radar boards. And there are some logistical things that kind of are not municipal, that are kind of the reasons why we don't have that already in the city of Barry. And I can elaborate on that maybe afterwards. I've also, on my page, vote Natalie.ca, I take some time to scroll through it, because I do update on a regular basis what those provincial policies are, what the changes are, why you might not see something that you want in the ward immediately, what are the rules and regulations. I actually just posted the Ministry of Transportation's road signs PDF, because a lot of people ask me about three-way stops or crosswalks, etc. And there are thresholds and limits that need to be met in order to have those things implemented in our municipalities. So we can do studies. That's kind of where we start as a councillor. And if those thresholds are met, then we can go to city council and ask for those things. But it sometimes makes it, you know, well, let's just get that stop sign, because that will make it so much safer. There's actually really great details in that PDF to tell you why sometimes it's not, which I did not know before I was city councillor as well. So take a look at that, and I'll pass it along to my fellow councillor Gary Harvey. And with that, thank you so much.
Great, thanks, Nat. It sounds like I'm going to win the award for the shortest introduction compared to those two. I'd just like to welcome everybody. I do really appreciate these town halls, because I think it really brings us back down to what I would call ground zero, and that's really what's important to residents, because sometimes we end up talking and discussing matters at council, a lot of times that are not necessarily matters that really impact the day-to-day lives of our residents. And the reality of it is, most people are probably more concerned about speeding and potholes, and other matters with snow removal and such forth, opposed to a lot of the things that we tend to spend a lot of time on at council. With talking about speeding, as probably I would say my number one concern that I do receive from people, I initiated the radar board expansion that we saw, I guess that'd be two years ago now. I know Natalie, you did it, added some more boards to this past year's budget. And Natalie already alluded to the fact that in this year's budget, we actually have ward-based budgets. It's not a lot of money, it's only $7,500. But I've opted to use my $7,500 by acquiring two more LED radar boards. And these radar boards are actually quite effective. They provide good data to our roads department, which then can obviously be shared with the police, too, where it'll show what the average speeds are and the percentile. They're Wi-Fi enabled. And there's a lot of statistical information behind them to show that they actually do slow people down, whereas sometimes the speed cushions and the slowdown signs are not necessarily as quite of effective. My end goal is to eventually have permanent LED radar boards in every school zone, opposed to having them move around every three to four months, and also hopefully acquire enough that on top of the school zones, that we've got another few more that can be moved within the ward. Because I've seen a big success, especially on Mapleview, when we just had it up there through the summer months. I sat there for a little bit watching, and it was amazing how many people actually did slow down when the thing started flashing at them, or even if they were only doing a little bit over, the the numbers would go red. So that seemed to be very effective. Most recently, too, one of the issues that came to light again was the driving schools. And so there's one area in the Veterans and Mapleton area on both sides, where they're very much dedicated to drive test, testing areas, I guess you could call them. Unfortunately, they're controlled by the MTO, so we can't stop the actual drive test centers from conducting the tests in those areas. However, what we can control is the driving schools going into these areas with their students ahead of time, and practicing day after day. And I know for a fact this is occurring, because when my two kids, just in the past couple of years, did their driving school, that's exactly where they were taken on multiple occasions. So we just passed another motion a few weeks ago that restricts that entire area now, because essentially, they first started off on the Brookwood side, on the east side of Veterans, then we pushed them to the west side. We added a few more streets, and now we've had to close off the entire west side. So other than the actual drive test cars, which still may have a school sign on top of it, there should not be any day-to-day driving schools going through this area, doing tests. The other hot topic that's been in my area in the last few years is some of the infill developments that are being proposed. And I just want to assure residents that I'm here to listen and to fight for what's right, and make sure that what we're getting coming forward is something that's good for the community and not necessarily good for the developer. And I hope people have recognized that that's the case, especially when we had the Rowa townhouses at Essa and Athabasca that went from ten and three stories down to eight and two. Nobody walked away necessarily being a winner in that one. So I will, I will leave it at that, because I don't want to cut into too much time, and I want to make sure that we have enough time for residents to ask their questions.
Okay, so at this point, we'll open the floor, and Lauren, I think you are directing traffic.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And so participants, if you would like to speak, please feel free to use the side panel to raise your hand if you'd like to speak directly. Otherwise, you can utilize the Q and A panel, and I'd be happy to ask your question on your behalf. So first up, we do have a hand up from Upple. I will allow you to talk, and I'd ask you to unmute yourself and join the conversation.
Great, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, thanks. Mayor Lehman, Councillor Harris, Councillor Harvey, thank you for hosting this meeting, and of course, Barry Police Services, thank you for being here as well. Please bear with me, I am in a hockey rink. My son is playing hockey right now, and I am masked up as well, so please be patient and bear with me, but I will be as quick as I possibly can. My concern comes around, it comes about in regard to the application for 407 to 449 Mapleview Drive West. Mayor, Councillor Harris, I'm sure you're well apprised of it. I know Councillor Harvey is well apprised of this development that has been proposed by IPS on behalf of the builder. And this is five family homes, five bungalows, that's been proposed, they're proposing to have 88 residential units. You know, Mayor and councillors, I am very concerned, along with our community, about this project. I'm all for intensification, but I'm for responsible intensification. And this plan reeks of irresponsibility. It also does not inspire any confidence whatsoever that the builder wants to work with us by proposing something of this nature. Mayor Lehman, I'm sure you're well aware of the area, and you know it quite well. There's nothing but bungalows and two stories around. It's not a good fit into the neighborhood. I'm not going to talk about the privacy issues that the people on Redfern and other areas will, you know, have in regards to this project and the traffic. You'll be well aware that five family homes turning into 88, that's not going to work for traffic as well either. I look at all the projects that were approved in the last three to five years, especially down Essa Road. And I think if the council was being honest with themselves, they would want to have a do-over in letting those projects move forward. And I think this is a great opportunity. And, you know, I don't think you need to wait for the, for the planning meeting when this is brought forward to show your support to our community. Mayor Lehman and Councillor Harris, I think you can show support tonight and give us some hope that something can be done. And I don't think we're looking for, you know, 50 units or 60 units. I think that's still irresponsible. Again, five family homes turning into 88, and you see the mess that's happened on Essa Road, and this is not even in an intensification corridor. So, listen, I know other people want to talk. Mayor Lehman and Councillor Harris, and I got to give a big shout out to Councillor Harvey, who's been with us every step of the way, guiding us and counselling us and listening to us, most importantly. We really appreciate that. But here's an opportunity for yourself, Mayor Lehman and Councillor Harris, to show your support to our community. And I really don't think you need to wait for the planning development to know that this is something that won't fit and work into our community. That's all I have to say. I really want to thank you for the opportunity to let me speak tonight. Mayor Lehman, Councillor Harris, I know we'll see you at the planning meeting as well. And I, one more thing, it's unfortunate that the planning, that the initial community meeting happened by Zoom, because I can tell you that that room would have been filled with over 100 people. And I don't want you to forget that part as well. So even though the next meeting is going to be by Zoom, too, rest assured that there'll be lots of people there. And I know you won't have the visual, Mayor Lehman, but it will be packed in the Zoom room with people sharing their concerns when the time is right. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much, Councillor Harvey. I don't know if you want to start.
Yeah, actually, like, I've had extensive conversations with Mr. Upple. And actually, just so that way, I had the most up-to-date information to provide the residents that are on this call. I did double-check into it again, just to see whether or not an application has actually been filed yet. And we still do not have an official application filed on this particular parcel of land. Staff anticipate that one's obviously going to be coming, and it is anticipated that sometime at the end of this year or the beginning of next year, we possibly will have a public meeting on this. But again, until the developer submits an application, we truly don't know what we're, what we're actually going to be dealing with, as those neighborhood meetings are designed specifically for what ended up happening, where they came in, they presented, every resident was against what they were presenting. So a lot of times, they'll go back to the drawing board. So it's still a waiting game, and let's hope they come back with something a lot more reasonable than what was presented.
Yeah, I just echo that, Mr. Upple. Thank you for your remarks and your concern. And I can, you know, I am familiar enough, having heard about this, but without an application, you know, typically, Gary's exactly right. You know, these neighborhood meetings with a strong response from the community and the kind of concerns that have been expressed, the developer does have the option of coming in with something with a lot fewer units or a different built form or something like that. If it comes in the way it was presented, obviously, to you and your fellow residents, it's a major issue for concern. And, you know, I would, I'm not going to comment on where we might end up on this without knowing what, you know, there's, there isn't even an application yet. But I will say this, I have a concern that we have in Barry seen a lot of applications for intensification outside of the nodes and corridors that have been designated, that rely on the general policies in our planning documents to encourage them. And generally, in those cases, we should not be looking at the same degree of change that we should be in our, in our nodes and corridors. So I say that without, without a formal application, and that's a lot more than I would normally talk about. But I've been seeing this kind of problem. And to be frank, in Ward Six and Seven, I mean, I'm a little surprised by how much intensification has been proposed and built, in fact, on Essa, Arda, and Ferndale. But a lot of that is because it's the old Highway 27, and you've got big lots and big homes, and same with Mapleview, it used to be the 12th line of Innisland. So anyway, I'll leave it there. Thank you very much for your comments, sir.
Thank you kindly. So I'll be managing the questions and answers as well. So I will be asking the questions. So we'll move on to a question from Marcello, who lives on Essa Road and is concerned about the speeding along Essa and Mapleton, has seen very many accidents around this intersection, and little to be done to manage some of the traffic issues. Is there any suggested solutions, such as red light cameras, to affect this area?
So I'll touch, I'll touch on that briefly, and then, and then whether Councillor Harris wants to jump in, or actually, it might be something for the members of our police service to touch base on, too. So behind the scenes, without saying too much that I publicly can't, yes, red light cameras is something that I've been diving into to look at cost factors. I know a report did come back to the previous council in regards to red light cameras. The cost at that point in time was $65,000 per location. However, there is a new program in place through a provincial partnership, where the municipality doesn't actually have to burden the whole cost of it, and it's basically a monthly rental. So that is one avenue that I'm exploring. I know we currently have one of the LED radar boards on Essa Road, so it'll be interesting to see what the data from that, that shows. And I know some of the speeding concerns that we've had have actually been related to some of the souped-up cars that have been hanging out in the Food Basics Plaza. And I know from time to time, they've actually moved to try and, I guess, probably tuck away and hide from the police, so they're not so out in the open, because I have had a couple of residents alert me to the odd weekend where they've been hiding behind the blue glass building on Mapleview near Veterans, where Jack's Jungle Gym is. So that is a concern. Thankfully, we're getting into the cold weather, so that that concern should probably slowly go away with the weather that we're going to see. But obviously, it'll, it'll probably rear its head again once the nice warm weather hits. I don't know if Councillor Harris wants to add to that, because I'm sure it probably doesn't change as you get further north on Essa Road into your area.
Exactly. Yeah, that's the same. I just echo what you're saying, Councillor Harvey. Maybe the Barry Police Service could elaborate for the public on what the municipalities need to go through, or even Mayor Lehman, to even get photo radar, and how, how does that work? I know we've, I guess, like Councillor Harvey said, we've brought it to council. I know there was with COVID-19, a bit of a delay with it coming back to council. So I'm not sure, Mayor Lehman, do you want to jump in, or maybe the police? But I think that's something I'm always asked, is, when can we get photo radar? There's always some answers I can elaborate, as well as you can.
Yeah, why don't I start, and then I'll hand it over to Val or Kevin. I think the municipality can initiate the program. Toronto's had some success with it. The challenge initially was successful court challenges and the burden on the court system from all of those challenges. York, York region had some issues with that, according to our staff and the court costs. That being said, I think the technology has gotten a little better. The cost situation has improved, and there's more service provision, as Councillor Harvey has talked about, which could allow a program to be successful. So my short answer on this is, is stay tuned. I think photo radar in school zones, red light cameras at the worst intersections are a very strong possibility for us. I have always been supportive of that idea myself, if we're able to get a program that is effective. Kevin, Val, I don't know if you want to chip in?
Well, Mayor Lehman, thank you. I agree with both you and Councillor Harvey and Councillor Harris. It is an issue we're aware of it. We are citizens of Barry, and your concern is ours, too. So I had a meeting recently with Councillor Harvey, and I appreciate the fact that the speed boards in the zones in the wards, we're sharing that data now. So that's going to help us to communicate with our traffic unit and our officers posted in those neighborhood patrol zones to conduct some enforcement when they find some time. And this being a concern, we will mention that, bring it forward.
Thank you. Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Just reminded me, another thing that would be good information, again, I have it on my website. I think there have been two or three different streets now in Ward Six, where Officer Alport has installed a black box, and that records the speed, the number of cars that go down that road, and really gives a better picture as to how often people are speeding. Personally, the one resident in particular that I've been working with on these, with the black box data, it's, it's quite interesting to see the average is usually not speeding. There are the one-offs that definitely, you know, are, and that's a huge concern to all of us. But I think that it's, it's really important for everybody to know that we're getting better technology to really record and capture the data and make sure that we know for sure, like, where are the really key concerning streets in each ward? So I don't know if maybe the Barry Police wants to elaborate on that, too. But I found the data quite interesting, and I know I'm going to be implementing them on some more streets in the ward.
Thank you, Councillor Harris. I forgot to mention that, yes, our traffic unit does have a box. They do place it throughout the city, and it takes a few days up to a week to gather the data necessary to formulate a plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll open the next question up to Sonia. Sonia, allow you to talk if you can unmute yourself and join in.
Thank you. Thanks for this opportunity. I wanted to raise an issue that has been raised in our community since prior to 2012. It's in regards to the request from our community to have an always-stop sign put at the intersection of Staples and Place and Coming Drive. There have been numerous issues that we've had with this. I know that you, Councillor Harris, have spoken to the studies. We had one done here. Unfortunately, there were several flaws that we felt were part of that study. I did a petition on my neighborhood. I went to over 50% of the neighborhood door-to-door knocking, visited 128 homes, and got signatures from all of those people. I presented that to council, and after that, to the Roads and Infrastructure Committee. Part of the problem was that a raised speed cushion was put up in our neighborhood. And the way we found out about it was about a month before it got put in place, I noticed that there were painting markers on the road, and wanted to know what it was all about, and that it was this. And that's why I actually didn't get 100% of the And that's why I actually didn't get 100% of the neighbors to sign the petition because within a very short period of time, less than a month between me seeing those lines on the road and them installing it, I didn't get a chance to visit everybody, but I didn't visit one single person that didn't want to sign the petition. Needless to say, what got installed at a cost of $74,000 to the city has done nothing to solve the problem that we wanted solved, which was that the area is a very unique part of that whole stretch coming drive, as you know, is a very windy, twisty, hilly road. And partway through it, there's a playground where a lot of kids get on and off buses. There's community mailboxes there. It's a real nightmare of an intersection and then there's blind corners just before that intersection. What we wanted all along and still want to this day is a three way stop with a very clearly marked intersection. And having been to that Roads Committee and presented to them, I discovered that, yes, I know there is this process. I know that the province has their studies and their recommendations, but they're that, they are recommendations. And I've since discovered that there are many areas and intersections throughout the city that did not necessarily meet those criteria, but got stop signs anyway. And at that committee meeting, I was told that if we discovered that this solution of the race speed bumps was not working, we could revisit it and look at doing the three way stop sign, which is what we wanted all along. So my request to you today is to please revisit that. Have people come out and look and they'll see the blind corners that we're talking about and talk with the neighbors and you'll see that our simple solution, which would probably only cost about $1,500 for three or two additional stop signs and some paint would be far more effective than the $74,000 that was already spent. Thank you.
Hi Sonia, thank you. How are you? Thanks for your question. Yeah, I know we've we've had conversations about this before and it is definitely a very interesting intersection and the the speed, I guess it's the dip or whatever and and the narrowed sides of the road that was prior to me being elected. So I I have not I I will speak to Dave Ferrari, but I've never heard of the stop signs happening where it doesn't meet the threshold. So that's news to me. I'll absolutely advocate for getting that if that's something that we can do. Just so you know, I have requested through the city clerk and Dave to have a new study, an updated study for the traffic through that area. And also inquired about possibly having a push button crosswalk there as well because the park is right on that corner. So those are important things as well. I agree that there was a lot of money spent. I've driven along that stretch of coming, you know, many, many times. It's it doesn't really, I mean, it it doesn't, I don't know. I'm not really understanding the whole narrowing of the road. You're still lots of space in there. But anyways, let's uh let's work together even more to pursue this three way stop possibility. I'll follow up with Roads and Fleet and get more information on that and we'll go from that, go from there.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
No problem. Thanks, Sonia.
Thank you kindly. Now we'll have Andrew join. Andrew, I've just got you on mute. Perfect.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thanks, Mayor Lehman, councillors, police, police members. I retired tomorrow after 30 years in uniform. So thank you so much councillor Harris for your service and and our members, the Barry Police, Mayor Lehman, councillor Harvey, I live in your word and I think you guys are doing a great job. I was born in the old RVH Hospital and I'm proud to call Barry home and I think you're doing a great job. We love the waterfront. I'm not anti-development or anti-density by any means, but I think I would echo Cap's Cap's comments earlier about the infill on Mapleview. You have a unique opportunity to just tread lightly and be part of an incipient development and see it. See it from the ground up and my comments are are directed at the density that was proposed and Mayor Lehman's absolutely correct. Without an application, it's hard for you to see what we're considering, but the setback, the the proposal that we were shown at the meeting last month was it was it was just it was irresponsible. Like you cannot put that level of density on that sized street and expect that the overflow parking, the turnaround space for ambulances, police cars and fire trucks would be would be even possible. They proposed 88 units with 110 spaces with three visitor parking spots. I'll be straight up with you. Those people are all going to park on my street. Right? I'm I'm right behind Mapleview. They're not going to park on Mapleview. They're all going to park on my street, walk through Redfern Park, take the easement and you get all the problems associated with people congregating in a park after hours like we saw Redfern Park had for years, which the Barry Police have done an awesome job at nipping the problem there in the butt. So thank you for that. But like you said, Mayor, without without the proposal, it's hard to say. My comments are directed at at the density, the safety of those proposal units. They have rooftop patios and they're so dense in there and they're set so close to the property lines. I don't think I don't think a crew could get a ladder up and get someone off a roof if they were in trouble. I don't think an ambulance could get it into a three point turn and leave in a hurry with a patient. I don't think multiple police cars could get in there in a hurry if they had to. It's so tight and dense. So please, please, when you when you look at those, when you look at those developments and plans, I'll be back again when when the proposal before you, just to give you my my technical expertise. I worked at a city south of here. We were proud to open a hospital, bring a subway to the city, open 80 story skyscrapers and and buries the next, but this is this is the city. I I I know development's happening. I think it's great. Every time I hear a siren, I know I'm in a busy bustling city and that's part of life in a in a developing town. And like I said, you're doing a great job. Just please take the comments from the community to heart. I was really, really impressed and refreshed by her. Some of the comments, Mr. Mayor, from yourself and the councillors too. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much and and those are my comments.
Thanks for that. Appreciate it.
Well, first Andrew, I'd just like to say congratulations on your retirement.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Thirty years of service. On on some of your points, I know we've like obviously a lot of it's been through CAP, but I do I do recognize your name also as soon as it popped up on the screen and we've obviously conversed to a degree. The one thing too, obviously, when it comes to the density of this too, you mentioned issues with emergency services being able to get into a development of this sort. So just to provide you a little bit of comfort that things of the all applications do go through our fire chief for examination by his people. I'm not 100% sure if it if it goes through the police, but I know from a fire perspective, obviously, there's certain provincial regulations around access and stuff when it comes to the fire code and things. So everything does go through there and he he has to be satisfied that a a big aerial truck would actually be able to still get in there and and save people if required. Yeah. So I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything further?
Oh, sorry, I was just trying to unmute. Sorry, Nat, I think I talked over you there, but I know you were offering your congratulations and I I would too. Congratulations on your retirement. Just briefly, yeah, the the fire review, absolutely. And there have been applications that have been sent back to the developers because their access paths were either not wide enough or their turning radius wasn't big enough and so forth. And when you, you know, when you move to a certain type of development height and and density, those requirements actually become greater. So we will, we will ask those questions, of course, in support of the process that will occur once there's an application received. And and again, thank you for your comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew. So we'll have Erin join. If you can unmute yourself.
I just did. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Okay, councillor Harvey, councillor Harris, Mayor Lehman and Barry Police Services. It's nice to meet you all. I'm actually a kind of a, not really a new resident of Barry, but I've been here for just over about a year, year and a few months, year and nine, eight months or something like that. So my concern, I guess this would be to councillor Harvey, because I live on Marcellus Drive. Is that, I guess that's Ward seven?
Is that correct?
Yep. Okay, my concern is the a new development proposal. And again, I know it's only a proposal at going in on the south east corner of Mapleview and Essa. Do you know which one I'm referring to?
Yeah, actually, it's the same one, the other two gentlemen that spoke about the build.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Well, see, my concern is like, I don't know how often you travel between Bayview Drive and Holly Home Farm Drive. I don't know how often you drive that stretch, but just the density there with traffic, traffic lights, just so many cars. I mean, I I travel it a lot and and I'm like relieved when I get past Holly Home Farm Drive. I'm relieved I'm far finally out of that density and the dense cars and traffic. And what you're going to do now, you're going to take 200 or 300 more cars and add to that pile of already dense, you know, and you know, when I'm getting out, like maybe I'm just wording it wrong, but you know.
No, actually, your your concerns are 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 very much my concerns, to be quite honest with you.
Right.
When you consider that you're changing it from five, five single family homes to potentially 88 family homes.
Right.
Obviously, you've got a significant amount of traffic that is going to be going in and in and out of one driveway. And I know I know also to the residents that come out of the subdivision off of twists onto Mapleview.
Right.
They've already got a significant issue trying to get trying to get out. And obviously, we can't put traffic lights at all these roadways coming in and out. So yeah, I I I am very fully aware and I'd be interesting to see when the traffic study comes forward on this one after it comes in. But yeah, in its current form, there's, I can't fathom that we're going to allow
Right.
That amount.
I I I mean, I mean, it's just even the size of the buildings they're proposing, like the condo buildings at 27 stories. I mean, that's why I moved out of Thorn Hill. I just wanted to get out of all out of all of that build already like and now it just seems like it keeps moving further and further north.
Yeah, and and to your point too, I'm I'm not a fan of what's been presented for that parcel of land either in the northeast corner of Essa and Mapleview, especially since obviously it it included three very large towers on the Mapleview side.
Right.
It range in height from 22 to 27 stories. Very much almost reminded me of a small version of the Vaughan Metropolitan Centre that Vaughan's in the middle of wanting to build with their subway hub. So again, until we get an application coming in, we we really don't know what that application is going to look like because obviously there were some current concerns on that public or that neighborhood meeting also when it came to what they were proposing.
Another another concern, this might be towards you councillor Harvey and the Barry Police Services. My concern is I know I know people are trying to go green and I know you're trying to take away car like a lot of cars off the roads with, you know, electric vehicles and the envies, trying to save the environment. But the bike lanes on major thoroughfares is a real concern. Like I know that I know the the Big Bay Point, that whole project with Harvey Road, Big Bay Point, they're putting bike lanes on major thoroughfares. And as a delivery driver in the city of Barry, I just find it annoying because a lot of these bikes start to think they're cars. And they start driving down the middle, like I've seen it many times and it's scary because I'm in a car, they're in a bike. And if we hit or we collide, who's going to get injured? I mean.
Yeah, yeah, no, these these lanes can be an issue at times. Obviously, the purpose behind a bike lane or a multi-use lane. So there is a big difference between the two. So the the ones that you see painted on Marcellus, for instance, those are actually multi-use lanes and they're not necessarily dedicated as a bike lane. So that way it still affords people the opportunity to be able to park on the side of the road if they so wish. Whereas if they were a dedicated bike lane, that would actually remove the ability for any on-street parking. So that's the big difference between the two. However, obviously, when they're within a painted boundary, they're supposed to stay within that painted painted boundary. Obviously, every collision would have its own dynamics to it and I don't want to get into a bunch of hypotheticals from that, but obviously, if if they're in a multi-use lane, they've they've got control of that lane and and you've got control of the lane that that you're driving. But obviously, if you say you're a delivery driver, I could see that from time to time, obviously, you got to be extra cautious when you're pulling over to an address to deliver, deliver a package. I don't know if inspector, if you're able to speak to any percentages of collisions that if if we've seen a higher normal rate of collisions with bicycles or not, or if that is an issue?
No, we haven't seen a high rate of of vehicle, motor vehicle and bicycles, which are also considered a vehicle. And you are correct. When they're in operating that lane, they are considered a vehicle. The bike lane is was designed for them, but we have not seen an increase in the recent months.
And one one last thing, and I'm sorry for taking so much time, is the length of some of the traffic lights in the city of Barry. Especially on Mapleview in that stretch I was talking about from Bayview Drive right to Holly Home Farm. There like you, you, I mean, I've I've come off Mapleview, I've come off the Mapleview exit going southbound on the 400 and I've sat there for like 15 minutes just waiting to get off the highway. I mean, it's crazy. Just they got some, someone has to like adjust some of these lights and the length and the timing. I just, it's just insane.
Yeah. So I I I can say I have had countless discussions with our Director of Roads in regards to that. And I know they have played with the timing on several occasions. Because trying to get through there, especially during peak times is extremely slow. And what I tried to correlate my inquiry was to when you go to New York City where all the lights will turn green at this particular time. So that's what I was hoping they would be able to accomplish here. Just with the way the lights are wired, they can't, they're not simultaneously hooked hooked together the way that they are in New York City. But I know they have played with the timing to try and get them a lot more in sync. Sometimes you will notice, and I've noticed myself during the middle of the night, there 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 will be nobody around and all of a sudden you'll be facing a red light on Mapleview. And that's solely because apparently the way the computer is programmed, once it sits idle for too long, it'll automatically send it through a cycle. Just with the way the system is set up, I know there was one in front of the Canadian Tire there where it was regularly going red when nobody was around even during the day. And then when they looked into that further, it turned out there was actually an issue with the the walk, the walk button. And so that ended up getting repaired. But yeah, no, your your concerns are duly noted and that's why my head keeps going down here. I've been writing down as as people have been chatting.
Just very briefly, Erin, I think the long term answer to that is the Harvey Big Bay Point Road Bridge, which will take the pressure off the Mapleview interchange. And we're, it's disappointing that bridge isn't in service this fall, but it should be in the spring. And that will make a big, big difference, I think, to the pattern of traffic, especially on on Mapleview and and at the exit.
Thank you so much. So we're going to allow Jaclyn into the conversation if you can unmute yourself.
Hi there, can you hear me yet?
Yes.
Yes, okay, awesome. And I, this is odd because I'm also from Coming Drive and this is my first time participating in one of these types of, well, in any kind of council scenario other than voting. Question for you on speed limits and how they're chosen. So our street is a 50 speed limit. Just wondering where those decisions are made. Where I grew up in York region where I've never been in a residential street that was over 40. So just wondering why we have speed limits of 50 kilometers an hour is part one. And part two is up at Holly Meadows Public School. There's an intersection there with crosswalks, I had a guess on all the lights. And on one of the lights, the crosswalk, the median is not like cut. So if you had a stroller or wheelchair, you couldn't actually cross. So that was my second part, but my first part is more what I was after.
Well, I'll let the councillor answer about both, but just very quickly on the speed limits. I can tell you there was an interest in moving to 40 in residential zones right at the start of this council. There was some public consultation done and overwhelmingly the public were opposed. Now, interestingly, I think when you break that down a little bit further, people are very supportive of doing it on their street and quite frustrated if it's on streets that they use every day to try and get around. This, the data is clear. Reduced speeds are safer. The problem, though, is that the reduced speed limits don't always come with changes to driving habits. Uh, so, um, while it can be a, uh, a very proactive step, it's not always effective. Um, so anyway, uh, on the, on the curb cut, though, uh, I think that's something that, that we might well be able to do as a, as a, as a small and, and helpful thing. Uh, councillor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Uh, yeah, I've, I've had conversations as well with the, um, Berry Police Service about speed limits and um, one of the interesting things, I've, I've learned so much since I've become a councillor, because I would, I thought as well, I'm like, just, let's just lower the speed limits. Well, unfortunately, like most things, there's lots of different processes to go through. Um, there was even legislation, uh, when I was elected for, um, making speed limits, uh, thirty in a, um, school zones. Uh, that was a different bill, um. Anyways, I'm gonna sidetrack here. So what I've been also told is following what Mayor Lehman said, so when we reduce the speed limit, sometimes, especially if it's on two-lane road, like, uh, where a car can pass, then you have aggressive drivers that will go around because the speed is lower than what they want to comfortably drive. Um, but I am for sure in favor of that. I think maybe the best group would be the Berry Police Service to answer um, why our speed limits are fifty on Coming and, um, what, what you think about safety with respect to that.
Thank you. I'll, uh, let Val answer that. She's been in the executive services prior to this role.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, like the mayor was saying, these really are provincially set standards within, uh, Ontario. There have been studies in certain highways, they've increased from, you know, one hundred to one-ten, that sort of thing. So most of our streets in Barry, they are fifty kilometers unless you are in a school zone. And that's something like you were saying, uh, councillor Harris, we'd have to go through quite a few hoops to try and change that here within our own community. Um, you know, it's never say never, but, um, we, it's not something that can happen tomorrow necessarily. Uh, we are introducing a lot of evidence-based policing here at the Berry Police Service. And a lot of traffic initiatives that we could start pulling data. And if we wanna look, you know, in the future, we'd at least have some data to present to different levels of government if we wanted to lobby for some sort of change. So we are going in the right direction by, um, implementing a lot of these traffic studies. And, and so we put ourselves in a really good position to start looking at some other, uh, options in the future.
Thank you so much. So we have a submitted question with regards to asking for an update on the library or the potential library at the Holiday, Holly Community Centre.
Um, what, what I can say is that, uh, the library, uh, as far as I'm aware, will be, uh, conducting a presentation, uh, in front of council, uh, in the month of November. Um, at that point, I'm not sure what their presentation is going to entail, um, but I know they have looked at several options and several locations, um. And, uh, I personally am in, in favor of it. Uh, I, I guess our biggest hurdle is gonna be from a financial perspective, to be very, uh, honest and open with people, because, uh, to, uh, open a, a library, even if it's in, let's say, a lease space, just the capital alone could potentially go north of a million dollars, even for a small satellite location. Um, so I guess, uh, I, I haven't received any final numbers. I'm in regular discussion with the, uh, the CEO of the library, though. Um, and, uh, and I, I personally hope they come forth with something that, uh, that can be supported uh, by, uh, by all members of council, but it's definitely something that I've been actively working on for probably about a year and a half now, to be quite honest with you. And, uh, and that's why you saw the, uh, the survey come out, uh, from the library that, uh, went across Ward six and seven. And, uh, I can share with you that I've, uh, spoken with the CEO about this as recently as, uh, about a week and a half ago now. And obviously, we're, we're still working on it, uh, so that way hopefully we have something, uh, very refined and something that is very palatable, uh, when it hits council, uh, in a couple of weeks' time.
Thank you kindly. We have a couple more raised hands. So, Mr. Boudry, we'll have you join.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you.
We can hear you. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so my major concern is basically it's traffic lights and speed limit on veteran drive. Basically, I think any light that has a turn signal should be used because we're having big-time issues with people taking chances on turning and, uh, veterans in our corner of the world. We have, um, an odd curve to veteran drive. And people in, one side gets the arrow to turn, the other side doesn't get it. I think the other issue is Maple View and Petro Canada, that's another one that nobody, even if there's a car there, you should get a turning lane. And my biggest one is veteran drive should be a fifty zone. Not sure why it's a sixty zone, because it's a, it's a more residential than it is anything else now. Also, um, I do a lot of walks. And I have, like, people aren't stopping at stop signs, people aren't looking for pedestrians. I know pedestrians have the right to, uh, to the road, but if I didn't look over my shoulder, I probably would not be here today. You know, and then the garbage cans are not being picked up. Um, Ams and Harvey Road, there, uh, is a big issue with garbage cans not being picked up there. There's a jungle of, uh, of dog poop there, sorry. Um, also, uh, Harvey Road and Essa, the light, when you press the button, takes three minutes to change. That's a bit long. To me, that's, people are, are anxious to get across and you can't get across. Anyways, that's my issue is the public safety.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Guy, there's a, a number of different things in there. We'll certainly look into the, uh, the mess with garbage cans and, uh, the timing on the crossings. Um, you know, I think the, uh, the issue around speeds, uh, a- and to the, uh, the previous, um, the woman who was talking about, uh, moving to forty. I mean, I, I think, you know, where it makes sense for us to reduce speed limits, uh, and where our, our traffic folks and, and the police believe it will be effective, we should do, we should do it. Uh, our school zone program, I think, has been very effective, and the Berry Police have backed that up with blitzes in September, uh, back to school where they've really cracked down and enforced that, uh, in those school zones, and people know it now, and it's changed driver behavior. Unfortunately, it, it's more difficult to change driver behavior when it's a, uh, an everywhere type change, but I think, um, you know, on specific streets, uh, where we see a particular concern, uh, there have been changes. Safety zones have been expanded, uh, and, you know, I, I would share your comments about veterans' drive. Um, when we look at the list of, uh, the ten, uh, worst intersections in the city, often Maple View and Veterans is one of the top three. Uh, and, uh, there's others, uh, unfortunately, that, that come up. But when you, when you have roads as big and straight and wide open, um, you, you get really big issues with speed. So I certainly share the concern and, uh, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Mark. I'm going to add you to the conversation. Go ahead when you can.
Hello, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm glad you can't see me, because I am desperately in need of a shave. So, anyhow, it's my question, um, regarding, uh, Hebrun Development. And that's one fifty-eight, one sixty-two, one sixty-six, one seventy, Arda wrote. More for councillor Harris and Mayor Lehman, kind of being new to this whole process now that the council has accepted the planning, uh, committee's report. What are the next steps? What happens next? What are the timelines, if they exist? And thank you again.
Do you want me to answer? Hi, Mark, thank you for your question. Uh, so you can always find all of the updates of where we are with proposed developments on berry.ca. You can just like search Ward six as well. Um, so there's seventeen of them in Ward six, which is, which is fun. Um, anyways, so we um, right now, the council meeting is to be determined. So the planning committee, like you said, just met on October twentieth. Um, that's where we're at. Uh, I think I will actually move over to Lauren or Nina, maybe they have it's just to be determined for when the council meeting. Um, do you know anything either, Mayor Lehman?
Um, I, you know what, I'm gonna have to, uh, uh, check on it, but Mark, uh, I know your question was about the process, I mean, um, should the approval, uh, uh, continue? I don't believe that one had a site plan approval along with it. I stand to be corrected, uh, so there is likely the second stage of the process. Now, site plan has been, uh, for years in Barry has been delegated to staff, but there is the opportunity for resident involvement. Are you a neighbor there or?
Yes, I, I am.
Yes, I think I remember you from the public meeting. Um, so, uh, there's, and that's where a lot of those very detailed issues that matter a lot, you know, to the people who are on the other side of the fence, can be dealt with. Things like exterior lighting, where's the snow storage? Uh, where is the, uh, location of the driveway, those sorts of, uh, of issues. So I, I'm saying all this without being, uh, completely confident with the number of development applications we deal with, that, that, um, that's the point we're at, but I, I am, um, uh, confident that, um, that, that phase of the approval is where, uh, perhaps some of those issues can be dealt with. So, long way of saying, I, I think you should give us a call after, or give councillor Harris a call, and we'll, we'll get you a better answer than what we're trying to give you tonight.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. And, uh, it seems that intensification is a bit of a theme tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I, uh, if anybody had told me ten years ago when I became mayor that Essa Road, Ferndale and Arda would be the three, uh, most popular streets for intensification in the city of Barry, I, I would have, uh, been, I would have told them they were, they were, they were crazy. I mean, the, uh, but the reality is, we have seen a number of developments. And one of the earlier comments was, you know, would council want a do-over on some of the developments that have occurred? I think it's fair to say that there are learnings from all kinds of developments. I mean, we, for example, the city of Barry, unlike the city of Toronto, doesn't typically try and control the materials that are used in construction. That's beyond the power of, of municipalities, although uh, when a developer presents us something that looks beautiful and then it gets built and it's different materials or different, uh, you know, details, uh, we do have some degree of control over those things. And I would say, I mean, the, my own take is there's been a variety of good and, and not as good, uh, designs that have been, uh, built already. Um, but, uh, every time, I think, both council and, uh, our staff learn a little bit more about, um, what, what can and can't be done to try and, uh, manage that. So you've seen, for example, in the last few years, some of our largest developments have had holding provisions on them or special provisions on the approvals that held the developer more closely to what was originally presented, because now and again, we, uh, we end up with something that gets built and, and it looks a little different than when it was first presented to council. Um, okay, I, I'm aware that we're a little bit over time. Uh, Lauren, uh, where are we in terms of answering folks' questions?
We have one outstanding question and answer. I do have some, uh, submitted questions, but we're happy to, uh, to stay as long as you can allow us.
Okay, um, I, I've got a little bit more time. Um, Nat, uh, Gary?
Yeah. I do, I have my, the only thing is that I have eleven percent in my, for whatever reason, my charging, charging my batteries.
It's wonderful. Yeah. We've got a couple more questions. We'll just get through a couple more questions. Yes, we just have a question regarding, uh, development, if you can believe it. Any mechanisms in place to encourage developments to go forward? There have been many that have been approved by council and they haven't moved forward. They've just been sitting idle. Any mechanisms in place to encourage that?
Well, I can, yeah, speak to that. So, um, uh, some planning approvals, uh, have a sunset. And I know, uh, Mr. Chabada is very, uh, familiar with some of the, the, um, situations that we've had on Essa Road and, and the controls that we do and don't have. Planning approvals don't lapse, but, uh, permits, uh, lapse and, um, site plan agreements lapse. So if you don't get started, uh, within the certain, uh, length of time after your approval, uh, you're out of luck. Uh, I would say more broadly, I mean, this is a challenge that we've had, not just on, on Essa Road with a few of the developments. And I'm, I'm sure you're probably referring to the one near, um, Mapleton and Essa. Uh, but a number of developments in the downtown, and in fact, uh, there's a twenty-two-story building on Bradford Street that was approved eight years ago, never built. Eleven-story building a little bit further down Bradford Street, approved six or seven years ago, never built. And the, the unfortunate reality, and I, I know Marcello's, uh, and others are aware of this, is, is we do have those situations where somebody comes in, gets a planning approval for density and then sells the property for higher value because it's got that planning approval on it. Unfortunately, in Ontario, we can't refuse an application just because we suspect that the applicant is a flipper. Um, but, uh, we, uh, we have taken to asking, uh, a lot more questions around construction and construction timelines. And I would say, um, this might be somewhat controversial to say, but, you know, the cost of applications, you know, when it was a, a thousand bucks to throw in a zoning bylaw application, then you, you got your upzoning and you've just increased your value by a million dollars. Uh, people would do that and flipping was, was much more common, uh, because the planning is more complex now and it does take longer. Um, we are seeing fewer, uh, I would call it incomplete applications purely for the purpose of, uh, uh, of increasing the value, but it, it's a problem, um, Marcello, and it's a, it's a problem, I think, with our system in Ontario where uh, unfortunately, people can come in with an application and, uh, receive their approval and then sell the, sell the project. And, and we cannot require, uh, the project to be built by the applicant. Um, which does lead to, um, uh, the, that sort of situation. I, I, I guess in closing, the, the one thing I would say is that, um, the, the market is so strong in Barry, uh, at the moment, and, and even since COVID. Um, we are now seeing people come in for building permit, site plan, building permit on an expedited timeline. And, uh, it's my hope that some of the good projects that have been approved that could really make a difference in our city, like Bradford Street, um, will finally move ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. And final comment for today, or question for you, Mayor Lehman, is can you tell us more about this new health alliance that has been announced recently? And what does it mean for our community?
Thank you for asking about the healthcare plan. Um, so, uh, I'm not gonna talk for too, too long about this. I'd invite the, the resident to give me a call, um, but it is very exciting. Uh, on Monday, we had, uh, the county RVH Berry Police and, uh, the Public Health Unit sign the Berry Health Accord, uh, which is a commitment to invest in the determinants of health. It's basically to shift, uh, our, to collaborate on projects and programs that can shift our investment in health upstream, uh, towards preventing, uh, the calls for service to our emergency services that are preventable. So, um, again, without giving you the whole long speech, uh, eighty-eight percent of the calls to Berry Police are non-criminal. Uh, our, uh, paramedics have done a deep dive into their calls for service and a small number of people account for a very large number of the calls. Many of these calls, whether to police, fire, ambulance, or in fact to the ER at, at RVH, are preventable. And they're preventable by us, um, reaching people before they're in crisis. We happen to have Staff Sergeant Val Gates on the call tonight. Val was absolutely essential in forming an early version of this kind of accord called Collaborate Berry, where the Berry Police and our community social service organizations try and help people who, uh, are, are approaching crisis or in, are in danger of ending up in the justice system or the healthcare system. They try and get them health before that, uh, help before that happens. The Health Accord is just a commitment from all five of us to try and do a lot more of those, those kinds of projects. And I'm excited about it. We're all focused on COVID right now. We can't change that focus. Um, but, uh, I really believe this is the beginning of a long-term path to a healthier community. And eventually bending that demand for calls for service for, uh, for preventable causes. So, I guess.
Yes, mindful of the time, mindful of the time. If there are any additional questions, we can certainly handle those through our office or of course, always, uh, reach out to your member council directly, Mayor Lehman.
Thank you very much. And, uh, just on behalf of, uh, of, uh, all of council, thank you all for coming out. Uh, it's, it's great to have, um, the ability to do this despite, despite COVID. And thanks, everybody, for tuning in tonight. Nat, Gary, did you want to say a little word of closing?
Sure, thank you. Uh, thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Um, again, I, I'm always open to suggestions and listening to, you know, your comments that you have about safety in your community and, and also in Barry and, and in its entirety. And I can't believe two years has already gone by and we're halfway through the term. Um, hopefully, we've made some great progress with a lot of safety concerns that you have, but, um, always available. Uh, natalie.harris@berry.ca and vote natalie.ca is my website. Again, just scroll through there because I do as many updates as I can with respect to our ward. Thanks for all your questions.
And again, I'd just like to thank everybody for taking the time to be on with us again. And again, I'd just like to thank everybody for taking the time to be on with us again tonight. And again, if you want to stay up to date, I predominantly use Facebook from a social media perspective, not a huge Twitter guy, but obviously, my website too, garyharvey.ca. And then through there, there's a sub-link to the Ward seven page. But also too, if anyone's got a pen handy, my cell phone number is seven oh five, seven two five, four five four six. And you can call, text anytime or email me. Be always glad to sit and chat because sometimes not everybody's overly comfortable in a public forum to discuss matters also. But I'd just like to thank everybody for coming. And it was great that we had our police partners with us again tonight because I know we always do get a lot of traffic-related questions coming up.
Yes, thank you very much. On behalf of Staff Sergeant Gates and myself, we are committed to each ward of the city and we plan on attending all town hall meetings and taking the information that we receive and working with that data. But I'd also like to remind the citizens of your wards to visit our website, berrypolice.ca and take part in our annual survey that we have. That provides you an opportunity to say how we police this city and we look forward to that and we look for improvement for our services.
Okay, thank you so much, Inspector McLean, Staff Sergeant Gates, Lauren and Nina from my office for your work in organizing this and Lauren for moderating tonight. And I forgot to mention a thank you to our CAO, Michael Prowse, who's quietly sat in tonight to listen to firsthand all of our residents' concerns. I thank you to all those who are here tonight and I wish you a very safe and happy Halloween weekend. Good night, everybody.